Good evening. I'd now like to call this joint City Council and Planning Commission. Are you hearing me twice, too? Okay. That's all right. City Council and Planning Commission work session meeting to order. The topic is Innovation Campus Project. I'd like to call on Jody Christensen, Special Projects Manager, to present.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm going to let Heather Richards, the Community Development Director, kick us off.
Yeah, so good evening, Mayor and councilors, Planning Commission Chair and Planning Commissioners. We wanted to have a work session with you on the Innovation Campus planning that's been underway. We are probably about two-thirds through this project. We've gone through some pretty big milestones that we want to share with you. But just to remind you, we started this effort back in 2017. So we've been working on this with the community for many years now. What's interesting is we just got off of interviews today for a significant position here at the city of McMinnville, and one of the candidates said that they were interested in the position because they had seen this type of proactive planning taking place in terms of the Innovation Campus and in terms of our future economic development strategies, and they were excited to see the city doing that. So this is work that we've been working on for many years now. We really do think this is sort of the next generation of economic development for this community in terms of this Innovation Campus planning. Just to remind you, this came out of the Three Mile Lane area planning process. It's been identified as an Innovation Campus, and we'll talk through what that means in just a little bit, but that's really meant to be an employment center with a retail center. And the intention for the city's efforts behind this is to set the table for that planning to take place for the private side. So we wanted to understand what was the public infrastructure needs to support the development on this property. We're looking for something that's more intensive than what was originally contemplated in terms of having high-density jobs per acre in terms of the industrial uses there so that we can meet our employment needs within the existing city's urban growth boundary. So we needed to understand what does that mean in terms of our public infrastructure, and to do that, we needed to master plan the site first so that we could identify where that public infrastructure needed to go. We also heard from the community a lot of concerns about what will it look like? This is the gateway to our community. This is a large site. We want to make sure that this reflects on McMinnville well, that it represents McMinnville and not just anywhere USA. And so design and development standards were very important to the community when we were going through the Three Mile Lane area planning process, so this project also does that. To remind everyone, this is funded through City ARPA funds as well as two grants from the state from Business Oregon to fund this project. So this is a grant-funded project that we've been moving forward. Jody Christensen has been our project manager for this effort of the project, so she'll introduce our consultant team. But before she does, I also wanted to remind you, and something that I think is really unique about this project, and I think it's been, it's put the city in a great opportunity for doing this type of planning, is that the property owners are engaged in the project. They have been since 2017. They're at the table, they're participating in the dialogue, and they're very supportive of this effort moving forward. So to see that and to work with property owners in that manner is really a great opportunity for us. So with that, I'll hand it to Jody to introduce tonight's work session.
Thank you, Heather. Tonight, we have the Walker Macy team. We have Ken Pyrie and Samya Kenny. They're popping up on the screen now. They'll be walking us through the updates of the preferred scenario, growth scenario, and some of the other work that we've been doing. And then Elizabeth Decker with Jet Planning is a subconsultant with Walker Macy, and she'll be helping us understand the design and development standards and that work and how that's rolling out. And then I'll finish off with a brief overview of the branding and the website. So with that, Ken?
Thanks, Jody. So as Jody mentioned, my name is Ken Perry. I'm a principal with Walker Macy. We're landscape architects and urban designers in Portland, and we're really excited to be talking to you tonight. I'd like Samya to share the slides that we're going to present to you.
Actually, I am being given a message that I can't screen share, so if someone is able to change that, that would be great.
In terms of the presentation, I'll start off with an introduction, and then Samya's going to go into some detail about the preferred scenario that we've developed with the property
We're trying to see if we kick her out and then back in, she'll have the rights.
owners. And then Elizabeth is going to spend some time talking about the draft, design, and
Jody just asked.
Great. development standards that we've put together for the project, too.
Samya, can you request to screen share because I haven't seen anything pop up?
When I click Share Screen, it says host disabled participant screen sharing. Request permission. I'm not seeing an option to request permission to share. Thank you.
All right. So we'd like to start off by describing some of the guiding goals and vision that we've been sharing throughout the project. If you can click to the next slide. This is a pretty simple project vision, but it's consistent with what was laid out in the Three Mile Lane area plan. And this vision and these goals were formulated with the city team and with the project advisory committee, some of whom are part of the Planning Commission and City Council. And we like to reaffirm these at every meeting, to remind the team that these are shared goals, and we want to make sure that our plan is faithful to them throughout the process. And we think that this plan is doing a really good job of setting the groundwork for fostering these high-wage employment opportunities that Heather mentioned, creating the framework for a place that will be nurturing research and development, providing a diverse range of spaces. And one thing that's really clear from public input, to create great public spaces and green spaces as a shared resource with the McMinnville community. So over the past year, we've really enjoyed the process working with the team. The city team, I have to say, is a fantastic team of collaborators, especially Jody. We really appreciate her leadership throughout the process, and they've been essential to the project's success and to its orderly progress throughout the past year. We find ourselves right now in a task that's describing and preparing design and development standards. You can see the red arrow there. We have talked to the Planning Commission before, but this is our first time talking to the City Council. We're at a very pivotal stage in the project. We have a preferred scenario that we'll share with you tonight, and the highlights of our design and development standards. But we are also finishing up an online open house that will go live next week, and hopefully everybody in the room will take that online open house and complete the survey and share it with your friends and family. Then we're going to have one final PAC meeting on August 13th, and at that meeting, we'll share the highlights of our draft report that we're preparing right now. At the same time, parallel to that, we're also doing some analysis of the infrastructure needs and costs for what we're proposing in our plan. And we are meeting with a separate technical advisory committee, and we'll be looking to prepare a report that summarizes those infrastructure improvements by the end of the year. So that summarizes where we are. Again, it's a very important pivotal part of the process now. So if you go to the next slide, this project, as Heather mentioned, is really a continuation of excellent planning work that's been done at the city for the last eight to 10 years. You've got your overarching McMinnville framework plan that's guiding growth throughout the city, and then the Three Mile Lane area plan was part of that, and that has been a close guide to all the work that we do on this project. And what we're producing as part of our effort is a concept master plan. And that concept master plan is considered an advisory document. It establishes the vision, goals, and objectives, as I described earlier on, and it identifies conceptual land uses, open spaces, a street network, and, as I mentioned, very importantly, the infrastructure needs for development to occur. And then a key part of that is design and development standards that can really ensure that this project is meeting the high expectations of the community for a really high-quality development. So if you go to the next slide, just to again emphasize that the Three Mile Lane area plan is sort of the first step in a continuum of work. I was lucky to be part of the team that prepared this area plan. It was adopted by the City Council in November 2022, and the site is really at the heart of the Three Mile Lane area plan. We've outlined that in black, the 190 acres that make up the Innovation Campus. And during the Three Mile Lane area plan, that really set the stage for this process. So we identified early on that there was great promise for a retail center close to the highway, and that this is a really great site to promote employment uses in what we termed an Innovation Campus, so that it was something that felt like it was a cohesive place for employment, that had a mix of uses and some sort of public spaces that felt like it was part of the city, but also was an appealing amenity for future corporate users to consider. And then we also thought that the proximity to the medical center to the west made for some interesting adjacencies and could be, again, appealing to future healthcare employers. So some of the highlights, if you go to the next slide, the highlights about the Three Mile Lane area plan, again, it's been adopted by City Council, and some key features, as I mentioned, that walkable retail center south of Three Mile Lane or Highway 18. And that is meant to be less than 33 net buildable acres, and the plan that you see on the screen later on meets that objective still. And it's also important to mention that we're really keeping an eye on the great neighborhood principles that have been established, and I'm sure you've seen those principles reiterated through numerous project approvals. That's a really unique part of your city's regulatory framework, and we think it's important that this project continue to adhere to those principles. I mentioned the Innovation Campus, and we think that this project has an incredible opportunity to take advantage of the context and understand, like, the image behind my head on the screen, the screensaver views of Mount Hood are amazing. It's also a really flat site, very buildable, and it has this great adjacency with rural views to the south, to the Willamette Valley. But it's also important that flexibility be considered throughout the process and moving forward, so we want to make sure that our plan allows future developers and the property owners to have a range of options to meet the vision that's set out in our plan. So just as a reminder, the site that we're talking about is 190 acres, and there are three property owners. DRS Land owns the western 90 acres. Kimco Properties own the eastern adjacent parcel of 90 acres. And then Three Mile Lane, 3330, that's a technical name, but it's Springs Living Headquarters property makes up the remainder of the 190 acres. And as you can see in this aerial, there's some great adjacencies, the Evergreen Campus, Schmeckda Community College, the medical center, airport park, and the airport, which is undergoing a master plan at the same time as ours, too. And as we went through the process, it was important for us to get a really good understanding of the site. So we did some early work, included a really extensive and careful analysis of the site's existing conditions, and we summarized some of the highlights of the site's amenities and benefits, thinking of them in maybe three main categories, thinking about some of the natural features that I talked about, the views of Mount Hood, but also Mount Jefferson, of the Amity Hills, of the coast range, the rural views to the south, the adjacency to the Yamhill River and the creek that extends from the river to the airport park. There's also some really key land use adjacencies, for example, the adjacency to the hospital, the potential benefits from locating uses near the airport as that grows. And then we also thought that highway visibility was really important for retail uses, so people could see as they drive by. That's a key part of the market for retail. And then circulation is the final key piece. There is a goal for a network of streets that extend through the site, so you'll see that in our preferred scenario. But it's not just about street connections. We also think it's important to have trail connections throughout the property. So the next slide. This just sort of shows you some of the feel of the site. You know this well, you probably pass it daily, but we'd just like to reiterate, this is a really special site, and it's got some amazing views and some natural features, and we think it's going to be very appealing to future users, and it's really set up well for success. So the next slide, as we took our existing conditions analysis and prepared with the help of the city team and with our larger consultant team and with the property owners, we created these three ranges of scenario diagrams, and we ranged them from low intensity of uses, thinking about lower intensity of employment, all the way to a higher intensity use, which basically related to jobs per acre or the intensity or height of buildings, and basically some of the land uses that are involved with lower intensity might include warehousing, whereas high intensity might include a corporate office park, again, with a lot of employment. And these formed the basis of thinking, of sharing with the community and with the owners and doing further refinement and understanding people's priorities. So the next slide talks about our public process, and it's been really important. We had what we think was a really great open house, 110 people attended in the room where you're now sitting, and we heard a lot of really great inputs. We heard that people, there was a lot of interest in some of these common amenities that I'm describing, the trails and open spaces. But people were also very concerned that we maintain the characteristic of McMinnville, that we allow for new development, but it feels like it belongs in your community. As you can expect, there's concern with traffic congestion, and that'll be a continued concern, and there will be analysis of that as part of our process. And in terms of the scenarios and how people related to that, people really liked the location of commercial areas and the street layout in the medium-intensity scenario, but for the high-intensity scenario, they really liked the connectivity of the streets and the trails and the open space that was provided. So as you'll see in Samya's presentation, she'll summarize how we took that input and created a preferred scenario. But the first key step, and again, just to reiterate, the property owners were essential to the success of this project and integral throughout all our discussions. We took the input from the public and worked closely with the property owners. We held individual interviews, but then we had two workshops about three weeks apart, and literally just put the drawings up on the board, put some sketch paper, and worked out refinements to make sure that they were all happy with the way that the refinements and the way the preferred scenario was going. And some of the key refinements we made with them was, we adjusted some of the streets. We sort of consolidated some of the commercial uses together a little further north. We simplified the plan. We felt like there was too many land uses shown, and again, for that flexibility, that we should just show two categories, commercial and employment. And it was felt like we were drawing too many streets and too sort of committal a location, so we just wanted to show key framework streets that must be built or should be built, and that there's local streets would be up to the flexibility of individual property owners and their development goals to make sure that those streets, when they're located, they still provide connectivity, but there's not a requirement that they be exactly where they are on the plan. So again, with the help of the property owners, we got a unanimous final decision, and they all agreed that the plan that you're about to see is something that they support, and they want to help see the success of that plan moving forward. So I'll pass it over to Samya.
Thank you. And with that, I will walk us through the preferred scenario for the Innovation Campus. I'll start with the broad brush strokes first and then walk through some details, so no need to capture all of this in your mind right away. But the first thing to point out is Ken mentioned the key infrastructure, the key public streets that we know we want to connect to the existing transportation network. So those are shown in white. You can see a north-south connection coming off of Three Mile Lane at Cumulus, and then an east-west street that can connect into Norton and Stratus at the hospital property. And what this key framework of streets allows is for us to create some really nice, flexible, developable areas on both sides of it. Firstly, to the north, we have the major retail town center, which is envisioned to be a walkable and high-quality development that reflects the character of McMinnville. So that's the primary kind of frontage along the highway, but we also included a really generous landscape buffer at that Highway 18 edge. And the intent with that is that the rural and agricultural landscape in this area is so important, and so we didn't want to lose that. And so the idea is that there are these key moments as you're coming down through My Lane where you get these views into the site that retain that rural character while still allowing for some visibility of the commercial developments that folks can see what's there to access. In terms of other commercial development on the site, we've included a node of commercial next to the medical center, and here we see some great opportunities for what we're calling a wellness village, so potentially commercial uses that could support patients' families or other kind of hospital-related uses, could be a focus on healthcare or wellness that could really create more of a hub on this side of the property. And then a small node of commercial at the south along this generous buffered open space at the Yamhill River Creek edge. And so what we see there is, you know, that great opportunity for some form of activity that brings people down to the green edge and lets them experience the open space and trails along that edge. And all of these orientations of commercial are really building on the key policies in Three Mile Lane area plan around walkability, enhancing the natural and agricultural environment, and providing public access. Then the other major land use color is this blue. So this is an employment area, a land use, and you can see that this is creating really big, flexible blocks that will have a good walkable network of local streets, but they would allow, you know, potentially a large user to come in and develop 50 acres, for example, or a series of smaller developments. So a lot of flexibility here in what could occur. We do see opportunities for connections to the airport here, and we see some great opportunities with adjacency to the medical center on the west. So last thing to mention here is that there are a couple of key open spaces. So firstly, in the center of the retail town center, we're envisioning a central gathering space that we're calling the Landing Commons. The intent with this is to really create a heart to the commercial town center and have a sense of place, something that can really tie it all together and have a sense of identity and activity. That's one key piece. And then we're also showing a five-acre neighborhood park over here near to the hospital. And this is identified in the city's park and recreation and open space plan as a need. We're showing it closer to the housing that's just gone in, so it's within a quarter-mile walk, and that's meeting the requirements of that plan. So a great framework of open spaces and public access. So with that, I'll just walk through in detail what we're envisioning for these different land use areas. So first of all, with the employment area in blue, again, lots of opportunities. What we're looking for is high-job density and high-wage jobs. So what we're trying to encourage here is more than 11 jobs per acre. We're looking for, you know, potentially large research campus users or employment campuses, some integration of both industrial and office, you know, potentially with manufacturing, so that it's not relying solely on office kind of employment, but also some kind of maker work. We see great opportunity for healthcare, and that is something that relative to the employment market for development is seeing more success, so that we think could be feasible. Labs also go along with that, so lots of opportunities. And of course, with the airport adjacency, there's always the possibility of aerospace or related industries being this site is attractive. For the commercial and retail land use, we're looking at some examples here that show really walkable and connected and vibrant experience for folks shopping, eating, working in this area. So examples of what a space like this might include would be kind of a large anchor tenant or tenants that help to create the draw that make the other series of smaller businesses successful. It could be a mix of merchandise and services, or not necessarily just buying some things, but experiential retail, like places to dine or sample local foods or wines. We are hoping that there's a possibility for mixed use, potentially vertical mixed use, for example, office on top of retail, so you could start to get more density and efficient use of land. Of course, dining is a great opportunity in McMinnville, and retail is something that we know is a need in the community, as there's a lot of leakage that's leaving the community. So the opportunity to meet local needs locally. And as we think about the commercial town center, so Elizabeth will get into this in a little more detail with the design standards, but what we want to do is really advance best practices for the design of this place. And what that can look like is making sure it's a distinct character of place that's tied to its context, again, with the landscape, the rural character, that has high-quality materials, it's attractive. We want to make sure it's connected and interconnected, so not only is it walkable within that retail area, but also it's connected to other parts of the site and even other parts of the city for multiple modes. We want to make sure there are lots of gathering spaces and human-friendly spaces. We do see that a lot of these centers that are successful have a mix of uses, so it's active at all times of day or has the potential to be active at all times of day, and ideally can incorporate some aspect of local business and local character as well. And lastly, a huge part of this is de-emphasizing and reducing the impacts of surface parking lots. So that could look like packing parking behind buildings, breaking parking areas up into smaller pieces, and relying on on-street parking for some of the parking need. And again, these are a list of best practices, so we're really pushing for these outcomes through our work. This is a series of best practices that the PAC has been supportive of, the owner group has been very supportive of, and while we know we can't necessarily achieve every single thing on this list in every development that goes in, this is what we're striving for in terms of the outcomes. Okay, so last thing, I'll give a couple of details of the plan. So one key we wanted to expand upon is the street framework and open space network. So again, I mentioned the key streets are in white, those who carry the main public infrastructure and then serve the developments through local streets and other connections. And you can see where we're hinting at walkable block sizes through these dashed lines showing, you know, block sizes of 400 feet or less. In addition, we're thinking about opportunities for strong pedestrian connections to get you from that landscape buffer and the retail town center at the north down toward the open space of the south. So these could be some really beautiful green streets that connect people from north to south. Then we have the central gathering space within the town center that's really well-connected to that landscape buffer, which could also include a multi-use path, and the neighborhood park being well-connected to the housing and the medical center. Last thing I'll point out here is there's the idea of a loop of trails. So we want there to be an interconnected network of trails throughout the site so that someone who works here or goes shopping here could also take a walk and do the loop trail around the site or potentially walk over to Galen Bator Park in the future. So well-connected. Zooming in a little bit to the plan to give you a little bit more detail, we're looking here at the intersection of Three Mile Lane and the main entry to the site at Cumulus, the silo building, existing building is here. So what we're picturing at this location are these generous view corridors and landscape gateways. infrastructure and then serve the developments through local streets and other connections. And you can see where we're hinting at walkable block sizes through these dashed lines showing, you know, block sizes of 400 feet or less. In addition, we're thinking about opportunities for strong pedestrian connections to get you from that landscape buffer and the retail town center at the north down toward the open space of the south. So these could be some really beautiful green streets that connect people from north to south. Then we have the central gathering space within the town center that's really well-connected to that landscape buffer, which could also include a multi-use path, and the neighborhood park being well-connected to the housing and the medical center. Last thing I'll point out here is there's the idea of a loop of trails. So we want there to be an interconnected network of trails throughout the site, so that someone who works here or goes shopping here could also take a walk and do the loop trail around the site, or potentially walk over to Galen Bator Park in the future. So well-connected. Zooming in a little bit to the plan to give you a little bit more detail, we're looking here at the intersection of Three Mile Lane and the main entry to the site at Cumulus, the silo building, existing building is here. So what we're picturing at this location are these generous view corridors and landscape gateways that you start to see as you move along Highway 18. For the central gathering space in the town center, that could include seating, could include a combination of plaza and open space, a place for gathering for events or for day-to-day use by businesses or the public. We're also thinking about these active corners. So what we want to see is buildings really coming up to the street and creating a really pedestrian-friendly and walkable environment. So that could look like windows, doors, signage, lighting, just making sure that at these key edges where we've highlighted in red, the buildings are really supporting the street. Next, moving over to the west a little bit, this is over by the hospital. So in this location, you can see where we're pulling the Frontage Road, Norton Lane, down through the hospital site and entering our site in an east-west direction at the connection to the street here. We think this can work. There may be alternatives to make it work depending on conversations with the hospital, but this seems like a viable way to bring infrastructure in. For the neighborhood park, this is a conceptual location, but again, it's cited based on the Park and Recreation Open Space Plan, which indicates we want this to be close to the existing housing. So we think this could be a great location in tandem with the commercial development and the activity of the retail town center. And then to the south and also to the north, we're looking at opportunities for office or industrial, other types of employment uses. Then moving over to the south, we're now looking at the creek corridor at the south with the generous open space buffer and trail. In this area, we're picturing, you know, this could be a great location for a large employer to take on a site. It's connected to the airport, it has some big flexible blocks. There could be opportunities for development to actually front onto the open space or have connections to the open space here. This is a very exciting idea that a lot of people are enthusiastic about with parkside dining or some kind of patio and activity space that allows people to spend time here. And then, of course, a great network of trails through that open space to take advantage of the natural edge. With that, I will pause and hand it over to Elizabeth.
Great, thanks, Samia. Good evening, all. Elizabeth Decker with Jet Planning, and taking all those aspects of the preferred scenario, combining those with the Three Mile Lane area plan, existing policies, and one of the next steps for this project that we're really in the thick of right now, we've got a draft, but we are actively seeking feedback, is translating those into additional level of detail within the design and development standards to ensure that future development really implements, captures all these great concepts and ideas that we're talking about. So next, please. You know, the key as we start off with these development and design standards is to ensure that we're building on the goals and policies from the Three Mile Lane area plan adopted back in 2022. Some of those goals and policies are specific to the Innovation Campus, or we're also calling it the Innovation District, and some apply more broadly across the Three Mile Lane area. And so some, you know, residential goals, for example, aren't applicable here, there's no residential use proposed, but anything related to employment or open spaces can be more relevant here, and we want to make sure that we emphasize and fully implement that. As Ken had mentioned, the plan and these policies are built around implementing the Great Neighborhood Principles, so we have also been checking back in with those to make sure that we're bringing those forward with some fidelity. So there are 24 adopted policies in the plan summarized here, I will not read them all to you tonight, but really, I like to think of them addressing two sort of main categories of the concept. We're looking at site design and building design policies. And so overall, really, we're looking at a site that is human-scale in terms of the blocks and the multimodal street connections, that's creating a dialogue between retail and employment areas of the site linked by some high-quality architecture that spans both areas and responds to the regions and this particular site's agricultural history. And then the other key feature has been, you know, emphasized through the preferred scenario is that the site design needs to encompass the public realm as well, with common outdoor elements like public gathering spaces, like the Landing Commons that you saw featured at the center of the retail campus, as that integrates with the employment area, but also smaller pockets throughout the site so that there are, you know, small courtyards and plazas and other ways to interact between the private and public realms. The idea also being to respond to and respect the natural setting with landscape buffers around the site, as well as perimeter transitions that maintain physical and visual access to the open spaces and trails throughout and surrounding the site. And so we have some pretty comprehensive policy-level direction from the Three Mile Lane area plan, and then the goal with this task is to provide some additional details and take a look at what it means to implement that. So if you would, to the next, please. So for that, we wanted to walk through how these policies are being developed into more detailed strategies for key areas of the site corresponding to some of those aspects of the preferred scenario that Samia highlighted. So your questions and clarifications, as we go through here, are welcome on each of these topic areas briefly, and then we'll also have some short time for a wrap-up discussion at the end. So welcome your feedback as we go along. The first aspect of the site design to highlight that we're working to translate from the policies and from the preferred scenario into development and design standards is the northern perimeter of the site adjacent to Highway 18. And given its visibility, this is a really important area to make sure that it implements the policies around landscaping and having engaging building facades that are visible along the site edge to present a compelling face to all travelers coming along Highway 18. And so looking at refining that and adding to that with some potential strategies, we're looking at landscaping that's in keeping with the agricultural heritage, entry features, a multi-use path with pedestrian connectivity into both along the site as well as into the development, as well as the opportunity for engaging building facade design as well as art features. So just take a breath if you have any specific comments about this slide.
Any commissioners or counselors have any questions or comments? Counselor Tocolsky?
Yeah, I had one question, thank you. Have you given any consideration to a bicycle-only path, so you're keeping pedestrians away from bicyclists?
Were you able to hear him?
Did you hear that, Elizabeth?
Yes, thank you. Samia, did you want to jump in there?
Sure, yeah, we have envisioned a multi-use path along that Highway 18 edge within a generous landscape buffer. What that looks like in terms of specific design could be refined, so we could suggest that it's a, like a, you know, shared but separated kind of environment where there's a bikes portion of the path and a pads portion of the path. So that's a great comment.
Thank you.
And I guess I would just elaborate a little bit further on that. So the local street network will still allow for on-street biking, but we are trying to make a more concentrated effort of doing wider multi-use paths where both pedestrian and bicyclists can use that that aren't comfortable on the street in terms of biking and getting from destination point to destination point.
Yeah, the reason I asked was because the transportation safety plan that we were working on a few years ago included some bicycle paths from the southern end to the northern end of McMinnville, and I didn't see that included here, so I was just curious about that.
Yeah, and I think so, as we move forward as a community, we'll have to have a dialogue of whether we want those paths to be designed as multi-use paths, where typically they're 12 feet wide and there's enough room for both pedestrians and bicyclists, but the bicyclists are in a controlled speed environment, or if we want to have separated paths for just distinctly bicyclists and just distinctly pedestrians as we move forward.
It sounds like it's been considered, so thank you.
Counselor Chenoweth?
My questions actually don't have to do with this slide, so I just want to make sure we're going to have time at the end to perhaps reflect back to what's already been presented for a couple of questions that I have.
Yes.
Yes, we will have time for that.
I have a question on the paths. So it's a private property, but we're having these paths. Who's going to maintain those?
So that will all be negotiated as it goes through development. So typically, if it's not going to be a public path in our public pathway system, it will be maintained by the developers.
Any additional questions? All right, we can move on, thank you.
All right, next, if you would, Samia, is we start talking about building that relationship between buildings and the street, as was highlighted in the preferred scenario, looking to create those key frontages and to implement some of the Three Mile Lane area plan policies around human-scale development that connect those buildings and the street. And so the focus here is really on both building location, bringing it up to the edge of the street or near the street, and then the building design, especially on the ground floor, to ensure that there are connecting elements like windows and doors, plazas, plaza spaces, and/or outdoor seating. And so also, what is important, what you can't see along the street that makes all of these things that we're talking about possible is parking. So moving the parking, as you see in the lower-right picture, to the interior of the site so that from the key street frontages, what you're seeing and engaging with as a pedestrian is the buildings and the uses themselves. So thoughts on this aspect of implementation?
Any questions?
Yes, right.
I'm curious about the safety of those main thoroughfares, if that is just cutting kind of straight through that, the development here. And we have parking off the streets. And just thinking about conversations that have come to Planning Commission of the folks that live in those areas on kind of the other side of the hospital, I'm curious, you know, as we're thinking about this, or I guess this is more of a comment, I'd just like us to keep in mind ways to keep those roads slower. You know, I could see people kind of using that as a way to kind of, oh, skirt the traffic around.
Stay off the highway and...
Yeah, totally, and kind of speeding through that area. And if we're trying to focus on walkable, I just kind of want to keep that in purview as opposed to like, you know, a straight road that's kind of wide is nice for driving a little faster sometimes, as opposed to keeping it tight and with that on-street parking.
Yeah. Thank you for that. So if I'm going to interpret that, is that it's that east-west main road that we have on our preferred scenario? The concern is that unless designed in a certain way, it could become a speeding scenario, which isn't the intention for it, because it's also acting as a frontage road.
Nailed it, yeah, thank you.
Any additional questions or comments? Counselor Tocolsky?
So when you visit Bridgeport Village in the Toallington area, they have a large parking structure. It's nice to sequester all the vehicles away from the, I'd say, the retail centers. Have we given consideration to a parking garage?
We have, I don't think we've gotten to that part yet, and that may not be part of the concept master plan. We have talked about Bridgeport Village quite a bit in terms of the parking and how it's laid out to support that development. It's not all one big parking lot, there's all these nestled pieces everywhere that has people get out and then engage with the center itself. So we have talked about that in terms of the geographical location and dispersment of it. You know, depending on the tenant use, that's going to determine how much off-street parking they need and maybe to meet the design development standards that we put together as to how much we're going to allow in terms of expansive real estate to support parking, that a structure would be needed for that many parking spaces. I don't know, but I think that that would be, that would not be part of the concept master plan, but would be part of the development project review.
Okay, thank you.
I don't see any other questions. Move on.
Right, Samia? We've also talked about the importance of this central gathering space, what's being termed the Landing Commons now. And so we look at that that was thoroughly addressed by the policies in terms of creating these gathering spaces that incorporate views and connections between indoor and outdoor life. And so working to refine that with some potential strategies around the building design that fronts onto these open spaces, having some public streets around the edges of the Commons to also create a strong adjacency there, and then a mix of site features within the Commons itself. So things like open plaza space, seating, shade trees, water features, and/or looking at some public art opportunities as well. So thoughts on this?
Counselor Cunningham?
Thank you. Being somebody who is in the hospitality industry, one of the things that I've appreciated, but at the same time seen some challenges, and I'd like it to be considered, and obviously I think this gets down to more than the gritty of the design phase, but as we create these buildings with every building you can walk up to, there ultimately is less back-of-the-house, if you will, where the deliveries and the grease interceptor trucks come and everything like that, that you really do need to consider that there is a quote-unquote "back-of-the-house" area where people can have their smoke breaks and people can, you know, receive all the deliveries that retail and hospitality environments get without taking away from people's actual interactions and experiences with these facilities.
Thank you. All right, I'll keep us moving, just so that we reserve some time at the end for conversation. But looking at parking lot design, we also have some, you know, if we're bringing the buildings forward to the street, that means we're putting the parking lots to the interior of the site and using different tools like on-street parking and some parking maximums to address the, how parking works on the site and how parking looks. And so there's two main components, really the amount of parking that we're looking to address by establishing maximum parking ratios and using approaches like on-street parking and shared parking to decrease the overall number of parking spaces that are needed to serve the site, although that will be, you know, determined by the future tenant mix and the demands related to those uses. But providing a range of tools for them to meet their parking demand. We know that people, some people will be driving to this site, but, you know, also with the mix of uses, creating an environment where folks can come park once and visit multiple destinations rather than, you know, driving from store to store. And then the other supporting component is, of course, the design of those parking lots, making sure that they incorporate landscaping, pedestrian paths, screening around the perimeter, some stormwater planters, and using all of those tools together to really break up the sea of asphalt so that there's smaller nodes of parking, as I believe Heather was talking about earlier. So any questions on how parking can be integrated into the site?
I don't see any questions.
All right, next, if you would, please, Samia. As mentioned, the next phase that we're looking to address through the development and design standards is creating a relationship between the retail camp, the retail center aspect of the site, as well as the employment center, so that the balance of uses and building design approaches create a legible relationship between them, not necessarily a monotonous or uniform look, but something that relates and has some cohesion. So looking to implement broader policies from the Three Mile Lane area plan about human-scale development and the scale of buildings, different building materials, as well as roof forms. So some of the additional strategies could include both features that connect across uses, so things like public spaces or parking areas that are shared between retail and employment, as well as features that could provide a transition between those uses, like a landscaping buffer that provides a little bit more separation, but in a calmer and gentler manner, and then applying both retail and employment areas a similar dimensional and material set of standards to create that coherent visual language. All right, questions here? We've got about two more, so we're working through it.
No questions.
All right, next, Samia. And then, as was highlighted in the preferred scenario, that in addition to the street grid and the gray spaces for streets, we're also seeing... grid and the gray spaces for streets, we're also seeing a network of green connections throughout the site to provide for a network of sidewalks, trails, and bicycle routes. And so to implement some of the policies from the three-mile-long area plan. And so to go along with that, we're looking at additional strategies to explore both, you know, I want to emphasize here, these are strategies that can apply both within the public right-of-way, where the city is going to further develop through the upcoming transportation system plan process and other refinements, through public dialogue about what some of these improvements look like in the public right-of-way, but also some standards for improvements within the private realm in terms of pedestrian connections and sort of sidewalk-adjacent amenities, things like bike parking, seating within the right-of-way. So ways to enhance these connecting routes, adding things like wayfinding signage, art, and other amenities. Questions here?
None.
Okay. And on the last feature we wanted to highlight, you know, if you imagine that you're roughly, you know, working through the site from north to south, we come to the southern edge along those riparian areas that connect to the creek and to the South Yamhill River. And so making sure that this transit, this southern edge, has a really strong character that implements the plan policies to protect the stream corridor and environmental areas, as well as opportunities for open space and a public trail as sort of a transition from the built environment to the more natural characters. So looking at some additional implementation strategies here to manage that transition from the built environment, so things like addressing the building design that faces onto this open space, enhancing more windows and open spaces like plazas that can connect physically and visually to that open space, as well as use of landscaping, plazas, lawns, trails, perhaps even community gardens that connect to the area's agricultural heritage within that transition zone down to the riparian area. So any questions about that?
Yes.
Counsel Tocolski.
Thank you. Is river access possible for kayaks, canoes, paddleboards?
So the Yamhill River is actually not in the city limits on this side of Highway 18, so it would not be possible through our planning process.
River County?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. And so next, please, Samia. As promised, we have opportunities to discuss. We really would like to hear from you what other elements or aspects of the site you'd like to see addressed through the city's design and development standards. Is there anything that you've heard today that you'd like to further refine or things that you haven't heard that you think are really important that we're paying attention to? So we'll turn it over to you.
Counsel Chenoweth.
Thank you, Mayor. I have two questions. Can we go back to the slide with the preferred design? Okay. So my first question is the, I'm going to call it 50-year plan, I don't remember what it was, for Highway 18 is closing all access and ended up with a clover leaf at one of these intersections that's located here. And then you would have frontage on both sides going down both ends, which would be in access to the hospital. Of course, you'd have the overpass that would be coming straight across. Does this frontage road, the way it's being designed, has that, I want to make sure that's being considered, assuming we're going to continue with that plan going forward in the 100-year horizon or whatever it ends up being, will this road, and this is going to kind of seem contrary to a previous comment, but will this road support the kind of traffic that will need to be supported if, in fact, we shut down all access and everything has to come through this road?
We'll have to bring that to our transportation consultant. So right now, there's enough, so the interchange is meant to be here at this intersection, the cul-de-sac intersection.
Mm-hmm.
So there's enough real estate being set aside for that.
For that.
Or a future jug handle. If I'm getting your question right, though, it's the exit off of Highway 18 or onto Highway 18 from the hospital in terms of being expeditious.
Correct.
Okay. We'll have to visit with our transportation consultant about that.
Because that's going to become, I mean, assuming we don't end up scrapping that plan and going to something entirely different, that's going to end up being an issue in the future. So I just want to make sure that's part of the discussion.
I will say, so, I mean, size is deceiving here. Jody was sharing with me prior to this meeting that this site is, equates to 150 football fields. So the ODOT will have the right-of-way from 120 feet of center line. And then the setback you see that's even further in terms of that green buffer, that's not the ODOT right-of-way, that's setback even further. So we're trying to preserve space.
Sure. I just want to make sure that road will allow for the traffic. You know, when you're fronting it right along the highway, it's smooth. When you've got to come in, turn, go to head over to the hospital, that's not quite as smooth of a transaction, transition. And it's going to be an important transition. So that's number one. Number two, on the area adjacent to the greenway close to the river, is it, I mean, I understand, I don't want to open up a can of worms here, but I really love the idea of having commercial space along there to be able to use, not necessarily for, you know, shopping or whatever, but restaurants and all that kind of stuff. And you've put what appears to be a relatively small piece for that kind of thing. If it comes out later that it's best to consider doing more along that for that, is that something that can be done in future processes?
Yeah, so to let you know what the process is, this is a concept master plan, which we have a requirement for in our development code, and it's adopted by the city. Then when the developer wants to develop, they come in for a master plan approval. At that time, if they want to make some amendments to the concept master plan, they have the opportunity to do so, and there's, it walks through what the test is to do that. So there would be that opportunity, making significant changes, well, they'd probably be able to do that, too. So there'd be major or minor changes that they could make in the processes relevant to that. One would go to Planning Commission, one would go all the way to City Council.
Thank you very much.
Counsel Keery.
Thank you. Overall, this is all sort of a private development, correct? All?
Yes.
Okay. Akin, and this is sort of a similar question to what the mayor asked, but I'm going to ask mine a little bit differently. The developers, will they, akin to sort of the Baker Creek North, trail sections that were put in and then passed off, will they be required to develop the park and the trails that are identified as part of the development and then hand off to the city? Or will we be building and developing those parks when the development is ready and that is triggered?
I think based on how you adopted the PROS plan and the comprehensive plan policies, it allows the city to make those decisions when this development comes to the city as to whether or not we're in a position to take the neighborhood park as a public park. And you have a comprehensive plan policy that allows the Park and Rec Director to make that recommendation one way or the other. If we're not in a position to take it as a public park, we know we need one in that area, so we probably would negotiate and try to set up something like we did with Lennar and Baker Creek North for the future, based on when we can take it on. In terms of who develops it, that would probably also be part of those negotiations.
Okay, thanks. I would just encourage this body to pick up and complete the work that we started a while ago on the parks' STCs for commercial and industrial land. We currently collect zero for the parks from commercial or industrial development. I really think we should be collecting STCs to do things like this as amenities for this area, and this is a great example. One of the goals that you clicked through was about something like small, supporting small and local businesses. How do you foresee actually being able to do that in here?
So obviously, the city doesn't choose tenants, and there's always some confusion about that in the community. We don't choose tenants for private property. But what we, the design and development standards in terms of what they're driving towards is trying to create a multitude of different sizes of spaces that would allow the opportunity for smaller businesses to occupy spaces in this development.
So size?
Yeah. So that would be the retail piece of it. The industrial side of it, so one of the reasons, the primary reason when we first started talking about this type of innovation district campus was that we were seeing a lot of our businesses grow out of their, our industrial businesses, and I would also see, say, our traditional office businesses, which we've sort of categorized as industrial a little bit. Jody and I, Jody and I went through that. But they were growing out of their existing sites, and they couldn't find new sites to move into. So either there wasn't the right-sized land or the right-sized development. So that's when we were like, we really need this larger campus district where businesses like TTR, when they were expanding and were going to leave town, have an opportunity to go somewhere here in McMinnville and continue to expand. And Springs Living is another example. So in terms of the industrial side of this, we really see that being mostly local businesses either starting or expanding in that space.
Okay. Whenever there was pictures of active businesses in those pictures, they were chains.
Yes, I know. So we're working on the visuals.
And then last, real quick, I know you mentioned the current property holders' participation, but the current large property holders have seen this plan and approved this plan.
The preferred scenario, yes.
Okay, cool. Thanks.
Chair Winfield? Do you have a question?
Yeah, just more of a comment. I appreciate all the thought behind the design and setting up the standards. My only, the concern I have is where the location of the conceptual neighborhood park is. I recognize that having two medical buildings on the east side of the hospital is a good thing because it ties in well with the hospital, but that south, the southwest building blocks the neighborhood park, and it's a visual barrier, along with being a physical barrier. And we have so many apartments that we've had to put in on the west side of that. And I feel by putting a park behind a building, it acts, we won't really be having a park. And we need to have a park for those families that are over there. That was a huge comment when we were getting, when we were bringing in all these apartments, there was a lot of concern about where these families were going to be able to have access to green space. And I know you're looking for visual designs and visual cues along, you know, with the employment buildings and everything being able to look out over the green space. But I think it's, I think it's just in the long term, it's a hindrance for what we really need for McMinnville is to have that park tucked behind buildings.
Yeah, so I understand your comments, Sedoni, because I didn't understand it initially in the chat. Is the two retail areas, the areas in, the area in red that's immediately west of the neighborhood park is what you see as sort of the visual barrier between the residential area and the neighborhood park?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Right. And as, yeah, and as, you know, we've always had so many comments from people concerned about our use of our land and encouraging higher buildings so that we have more dense use of the land. And so I'm assuming if we have medical buildings, they would be more than, you know, three to four stories minimum. And that's a visual barrier. That's from where those, from where the apartments and the families need to either walk or bike to. And that's just a comment, it's something I hope that people, the builders and the masters of design would take into consideration when they bring that forward to us. I recognize this is conceptual, but if it's something that could be brought forth to the, when it comes forward, we, it's just something that's a big concern for me, based on all of the comments we've had to deal with over the past couple months, year, when we were dealing with all the apartments coming in. And the second point that I have is I, I'm hoping that the landscaping that goes in that you're looking at, at least with parking, is at bare minimum what we're requiring now for the city. When you do have the parking behind the buildings, which I love, we really need trees. And if we could have shade trees all along the parking spots, more than what we're requiring currently for our landscape within the city, it would be ideal for me and I think just ideal for the consumers and the shoppers that are coming in and those who are employed, so you don't have to come back with a car that's 130 degrees in August. That's it. Those are my only comments.
Jody?
I realize, Mayor, that we're over time, so I'm going to go ahead and wrap up for us. We had a few more slides to share with you regarding the branding and the website. I'll be doing that in an email update to you. It's important work to name the site is a huge milestone, and we want to make sure that you have the background of that. We do have a website up. I shared that with you today. I want to be thoughtful that that is a work in progress. So there's lots of opportunity for us to customize that website, and I'll be tasked with that work over the next 12 months to really bring more content to that website. I want to share with you that on September 4th, we'll be meeting with the Planning Commission to go over where we are with our final report and some other updates. And then we'll be coming back to this body on September 23rd, and we'll be bringing you a lot of our final work in a draft form for your review and consideration. And I've learned my lesson. I'm going to make sure it's an hour and a half. I do want to share that we are kicking off an open house survey. It's kind of a first of its kind. We've been working very closely with Noel and the consultants. It's going to be a pretty spectacular opportunity for the community to learn about the project and also to engage in some of these key elements that we've talked about tonight. And that'll kick off on Monday, and it'll be open for four weeks. Thank you.
So the only thing I wanted to just include is, I like the plan. I think it's good. I just want to make sure that we keep in mind and not add too many restrictions on the concept so that we remember this is a private and that we are not adding too many things to them because it needs to be profitable as well. Otherwise, it's not going to happen. So parking is very important, and the trees, the landscape, I love, but just sometimes we can go a little too far.
Yeah. Believe me, the property owners are reminding us of that.
Perfect.
Continuing. We're trying to strike the balance between leveraging this effort to get to a concept master plan because that takes that out of their wheelhouse. They don't need to do that.
Good.
And it's gone through the process. And also still provide flexibility, so.
Love it. Thank you. Thank you very much. Okay. We will take just a few minutes before we start our meeting. Good evening. We're going to start our city council meeting. It is now 7:10, and I will now call the city council meeting to order and request that Claudia do a roll call, please.
Counsel Tekolski.
Present.
Counsel Chenoweth.
Here.
Counsel Payne. Counsel Geary.
Good evening.
Counsel Cunningham.
Here.
Counsel President Peralta.
Here.
And Mayor Morris.
Here. If you're able to stand, please stand for the pledge. And I've asked Patty Herzog from AEDP to lead us in the pledge. Thank you, Patty. Next is public comments. If any interested audience members are invited to provide comments, and any comment provided that requires some type of follow-up will be assigned to a staff member. Anyone may speak on any topic other than a matter in litigation, a land use decision that is or will be in front of the city council, or a matter scheduled for a public hearing at some future date. Comments will be limited to four minutes per person for a total of 32 minutes. If you are on Zoom and wish to speak, please use the raise your hand feature or chat feature and send a chat to the city recorder team. Once your turn is up, we will announce your name and unmute your mic. Do we have anybody signed up?
Yes, and before we start, I do want to state for the record that the city council received an email written public comment, which I sent out to everyone and will be posted on the amended packet tomorrow. Ramsey McPhillips, if you can rejoin as a panelist, you'll be able to start your video.
Can you hear me and see me?
Yes.
Great. I'm Ramsey McPhillips. I live at 1300 Northwest, North, or McPhillips Road here in McMinnville, and I'm the president of Zero Waste McMinnville. And I simply just wanted to come to the meeting tonight to let you know of a very generous grant that was given to Zero Waste McMinnville from Oregon Community Foundation. It's called Zero Waste, Zero Hunger. And the purpose of this grant is to coalesce, organize, and pull together all of the food waste, food distribution, and food growing preservation in the city through paid employee for about eight months, resulting in a final document, which we hope will be something that will be efficient for everyone involved in that world, whether it's the soup kitchens, through the churches, or the county agencies. We also received a $5,000 grant for gleaning. So those of you who have fruit trees in your backyard, you may be, someone with a clipboard may be stopping by to find out what variety you have. But the point of this is to really take care of ourselves and the community who perhaps is less fortunate than, I'll speak for myself, than myself, to make sure that they're getting proper nourishment and that we utilize all of the utilities before us and that we can just organize everyone to make sure that they're not wasting food, providing food. It includes the entertainment, event centers, and everyone else you can possibly imagine. So we are looking for the right person. So I just wanted to put that out there, that you can go to the zerowastmcminnville.com website, find the job description, and hopefully you might know some people that would be just right for this position, resulting in that final booklet, first part of the summer next year. Thank you.
Thank you. Claudia?
Next, we have Amanda Pawonka.
Hi, Amanda. Is the green light on?
There it is. Hi. I'm Amanda Pawonka, and I live in McMinnville. Okay, so I guess, I know it's, the McMinnville landing is all private sector stuff, so I'm just putting this out there. Hopefully developers can hear me because my heart is for my kids. They're all not little babies anymore, and we need a langers, a big owls, a family fund center. I'm just saying, if we're thinking about the community, we need to think in those terms because I can't tell you countless times, driving to Salem, driving to Sherwood, to go to a birthday party when we're going to have so much acreage. Let's use it for our people. That's my hope. And then last year, maybe almost two years ago, I talked at city council asking about bike lanes next to schools. Never heard back if that was in the works or not. What's going on there? Are we putting bike lanes in or not? I think we should, especially around schools, because I'm a substitute teacher and I see kids riding bikes in the road all the time, and I'm concerned about them. So there's that. And then, oh, I don't know if you heard, but Henderson House, so I'm an advocate and a volunteer at Henderson House, and Henderson House is going to be getting some pretty deep cuts to their budget due to what's going on in our government right now, unfortunately. And so I just want to encourage the community and especially city council to come to October 4th fundraiser that Henderson House is doing. And please tell your people, because it's so important for our community that Henderson House is funded. You guys know what they do. I don't have to explain. So yeah, please be proactive in helping fundraise for Henderson House. And then I still stick to it that Quarry Park needs to be developed. Okay, thank you.
Amanda, I'll have someone give to you on the bike pass.
That's everyone that signed up.
Is there anybody in the room that would like to speak? Nope. Thank you. Counsel, kept looking at me. Okay. All right. So next up is our annual recology presentation. We have our room full here. Chris Carey, General Manager, and Dan Bloom, Government and Community Relations Manager. And this is Nick Olheiser.
It's, yeah.
Not on my script, Nick.
Sorry about that. Good evening, Mayor Morris, members of council, staff and community. My name is Dan Blue. I'm the Recology Government and Community Engagement Manager for Recology Northern Oregon. And with me tonight?
Good evening. Nick Olheiser. I'm the Assistant General Manager for our Recology Western Oregon operations here in the Valley. And as you alluded to, we have a couple of guests with us here tonight. Oh, thank you. We have Chris Carey, who is our General Manager for our Oregon operations with us. And we also have Steve Brum, who is our Regional Vice President for our PNW group as well with us here tonight.
Nick. So yeah, we'll have a brief presentation for you tonight. I know you have two items on the agenda for us. We're going to touch base on the annual financial review, which comes up later in your meeting, provide an update on kind of what's been going on with Recology over the last year here in McMinnville, and some forward-looking items as well. And then, of course, answer any questions that might come up. So it's the agenda. And before I jump into it, though, I kind of wanted to do a little level set on timeline, kind of, you know, how we got here. So it's been a little bit of time since we've been in front of council. I think we were last before you back in September when we had a rate adjustment, and then we presented a series of service options to council and received quite a bit of feedback from that. And then, then we entered into a period where we have been in discussions with city staff, city manager Jeff Towery, and Public Works Director Jeff Hunziker about improvements to the franchise agreement. And so we've been doing that for a few months, and happy to report that those discussions are going really well and productive. And that kind of brings us up to where we are today with this service update. Okay, I will talk a little bit about the annual financial review. So we, as your hauler, have the privilege of being your franchised service provider. It gives us exclusivity, but in, and in return, we pay franchise fees to the city and operate within a margin established by the franchise agreement. Unlike businesses operating outside of a franchise, our earnings are determined by the terms of the franchise agreement within an allowable range. Our agreement provides basically two mechanisms for adjusting collection rates, and those are part of the financial process established in the franchise. The first mechanism is to utilize a CPI or cost of living adjustment intended to maintain collection rates to keep up with current economic conditions. And then the second is consider like a full rate review process, which can be initiated by us or if we fall outside of that allowable margin. This year, we're requesting a 2.1% rate increase across all lines of service to keep pace with cost of services and to avoid having to ask for a larger rate increase next year. So the impact to the most common McMinnville customer would be 67 cents a month for that weekly garbage service, as well as the other materials that we provide. So in your packet, you'll see a staff report. It has our annual report. It has the rate sheet. It has a third-party financial review as well. That comes up later in your agenda tonight. But I wanted to touch base on that since this is when we're talking to you. So let's see. Before moving off this slide, I do want to briefly mention that there are some really positive tailwinds related to recycling collection and processing costs. This is associated with the Recycling Modernization Act, which launched July 1 of this year. So we do anticipate some benefits to the community here, including reimbursement for glass recycling costs. Let's see, transportation costs, also expanded recycling options here in the community, and then long-term market stability. So I just wanted to mention a few of those before we move on. See, I think I went ahead one. Turn it over to Nick.
Awesome. Thank you, Dan. Briefly, over the next couple of slides, I just wanted to do a quick overview of our Valley-based operations that is based out here in McMinnville. If you look on the map here to the top kind of left portion of the photo there, we have our collection company, which is located over off of Lafayette Avenue. It's here that we house all of our trucks. Our maintenance shop is there as well. Our administrative office is there for our admin staff, as well as our local CSR team is based out of there as well. Adjacent to that, to the right of your photo here, the large white-roofed building, we have our transfer station. It's there that we have our robust recycling center. Residents throughout the community are able to visit that recycling center, drop off cardboard, glass, textiles, batteries, whatever it might be. They can also bring additional loose trash to the transfer station as well and dispose of that if it didn't fit in their roll card at their home. And then in between the transfer station and our collection operation, right in the middle of the photo, we have our compost facility. It's here that residents can bring in yard debris. They can visit our expansive retail yard, pick up bark dust, rock, soil, whatever it might be. They could even set up delivery out of there as well if they don't have the means to get it home that day. So as we kind of zoom out and take a look at this, you can see our operations, it's very unique in that it's a one-stop shop for our customers. They can pop in, pay a bill, drop off recycling, and pick up some compost on the way out of town, all in one trip. So we're really proud of it. We're really happy that we're able to offer this not only to the residents of McMinnville, but the residents throughout the community as well. And also, we have open invitations for anyone that would like to visit our operations and tour the facilities as well. Always willing to accept that. Yeah. Thanks, Dan. Again, focusing on our McMinnville operations briefly, a little bit more, these facilities and our operations help support all of our Valley communities, including McMinnville. And all those communities are listed here on the right-hand side of your screen. Within our operations here at McMinnville, we currently have 80 employees. This includes our drivers, mechanics, administrative staff. It includes equipment operators, as well as our CSR team that's based out of there as well. Of the 80 employees, 30 of which are drivers that service the communities on a daily basis, including the residents and businesses of McMinnville. And it's always nice to note that Recology is 100% employee-owned company. I'm really, really proud of that. So shifting gears, talking about Recology and how it serves the city of McMinnville and its residents and businesses more specifically. Currently, right now, we serve just over 10,000 residential customers. Of that, in addition to that, we have 1,100 commercial, including the multifamily sites as well. Something unique to McMinnville is that we offer a mature, universal collection program here with four lines of service at the curb. That includes garbage with multiple cart sizes and rate options, depending on service levels requested by the customer. That has recycling every other week, glass every other week, and yard debris every other week as well. And then one thing to add is that all commercial customers also have access to all four lines of service as well if they request it. Moving to the service standards, I want to highlight that as part of the franchise, we adhere to a very lengthy set of service standards that covers hours of operation, accessibility to our customer service team, safe operation and maintenance of our vehicles, requirements of our drivers to operate within. We have collection standards, which includes care of private property, noise ordinances, reducing spills, different things like that, as well as office hours, and even size of containers that we offer to our customers. And then down on material management, something that we always like to highlight is Recology is not a landfill-based company. We don't own landfills in Oregon or Washington. We only have a few down in California. Because of this, our focus is really on diversion rather than disposal, and try to best maximize the reuse and recycling of the materials that we handle. And then on reporting, whether it's DEQ, opportunity to recycle annual reporting, quarterly reporting to the city for transfer station activities, or now going forward, reporting on the new Recycling Modernization Act that Dan will highlight even further in a couple of slides. Recology is really the city's partner in ensuring compliance with these various reporting requirements. And then lastly, one thing that we love to talk about is sponsorships. Recology supports a variety of 501(c)(3) organizations in McMinnville and other jurisdictions here in the Willamette Valley with either direct or in-kind sponsorships, some of which here locally is the Juliet's House, MDA, McMinnville Downtown Association, See You Later, Provoking Hope. We do JBO and the softball program sponsorships as well. And most recently, we did a sponsorship of the MacTool Library, which is new here. So I'd also like to note that all sponsorships and donations are funded by Recology, and they're not covered by the rates and don't make it back to the rate pair either. Oh, thanks, Dan. So changing gears a little bit, talking about diversion statistics, more specifically for calendar year 2024. If we start kind of in the top right-hand-ish portion of the slide here, you can see total solid waste tons for 2024 was made up of 56,785 tons. Recovered tons was 14,541, and that number is represented on the left-hand side. You can see the individual line items that make up that number, and that gave us a recovery or diversion rate of 20.4%. One thing I like to point out on this slide, though, is that within that yard debris line item of 4,600 tons, those are only for route collections. That doesn't include the self-hall yard debrees into the facility that residents bring into the composting site, which makes up the majority of them. If you were to include that into that number, that would add roughly about 15,000 tons per year, 92% of which come from McMinnville. And that gives you a diversion rate of 34.5%, so quite a bit higher when you include that. Tonnage is reported on the slide or from our 2024 recycling collector report that we submitted to Oregon DEQ annually. Jumping into service excellence, since we came in front of you, we've had a lot of wins that we would like to share with you, and we also have some employee recognition that we'd love to share. First and foremost, customer service improvements. We know and understand that this has been an area that we've needed to put a lot of importance on and a lot of resources towards, and I can happily say that we have done that. Year over year, we've seen a 71% reduction in our average hold times. While we celebrate that and we're really happy with that, I want to stop and reassure everyone that that's not where we still want to be. We are still continuing to put as many resources into this as possible. We're making improvements to grow the team through additional training. We're focusing on metrics, daily and weekly metrics as well, sharing that with the team members as well, so they understand where we're at, where our internal expectation is to, and what we're doing to get there. We've invested in tools and systems, and we are going to continue to do so, as well as just ensuring that we're staying fully staffed. Obviously, that's probably the most important part of it. The more employees that we have at the call center, the more that we're going to get those call times now. Text them all or robocall. This is something that we've rolled out in the last couple of months. This is going to be utilized for inclement weather or holiday schedule changes. Essentially, what it is, employees, or I'm sorry, customers that have cell phones tied to their account will get a text message, and customers that have a landline tied to their account will get a robocall. their account will get a robocall, essentially updating them if there is going to be any changes due to inclement weather, especially during the winter months, especially around those holiday times as well, whether there's a change or not. Just getting that information out there quicker and more effectively and in a modern way is something that we've really put a lot of time towards. We're happy to announce that we've added a Spanish and bilingual CSR rep in our McMinnville facility as well. They're not only able to assist on the phone, but they're also able to assist at our counter for walking customers as well, and we've got a lot of great results from that. So really happy to share that. Our Rockstar of the Year. Quickly, our Rockstar program is essentially an employee recognition program that we've developed within the company, where employees can submit recognition cards throughout the year for their fellow coworkers who they feel have gone above and beyond, and they want to recognize them for that. From there, we gather all the cards and we select a quarterly winner, and then at the end of the year, we actually select an annual winner as well. And I'm really happy to announce our annual winner of the year was Jenny Whiting, who's actually our CSR lead out of our McMinnville location here. A lot of the time, she's the one behind the front desk if you visit the site. So if you do happen to go in there and see Jenny, please congratulate her for us. It's definitely something that we love to celebrate. So she's newer with the team. She was hired just a little under a year ago, but she's based and lives in McMinnville, just bought a home of her own now as well, and she's very excited about that. And she's brought a lot of great energy to our CSR team, and a lot of those improvements that you see, that 71% reduction is a direct result to the energy that she's brought and the focus that she's brought to that. So. And then lastly, Driver Operator of the Year. These are natural recognitions that are put on by NWRA. Essentially, what they do, every year, they open up a application process where employers can go in and nominate drivers and operators that they feel are excelling, and they go through a very rigorous selection process. Recology had a huge showing against a lot of national competitors in this last year. We had 10 Oregon drivers nominated, four advanced to the semifinals, three were in Oregon, and one of them was actually a, made it to the finals as an honorable mention. So this is really cool. It's not something new to Recology or McMinnville. McMinnville in the last six or seven years has had two actual winners that won the National Driver Year of the Award, one of which was George Hummely, who is still a driver for us on a day-to-day basis. So we take a lot of pride in, and we're really happy that they're getting national recognition too.
Thanks, Nick. Mayor, time check, are we doing okay? Got a few more slides? Okay, perfect. So I'm excited about this slide. Switching gears to community engagement work. I'm not going to go through everything because it's a lot, but I just want to share, you know, that we do participate in a host of community events. The picture on the bottom left, we were in the alien days parade, and one of those two little aliens is Nick's son's. So kind of fun things that we do. Also participate in the airshow and many other events in this community. We also collaborate with important community organizations, McMinnville Chamber, Zero Waste McMinnville. That bottom-right picture is from the Plastics Project event, which is a subset of zero waste, and we help them out with volunteer hours and also drive all their materials to the Portland market for them. Another thing, we have a Waste Zero team. Cade Kleinstaub is our Waste Zero specialist. He focuses on education and outreach to our residents, our multifamily schools and commercial businesses, but he also does special programming. And really excited to announce that we've launched a new artist and residency program here in Yamhill County in McMinnville, and it's in partnership with the Arts Alliance of Yamhill County. And essentially, we select two artists who gain access to the transfer station, to the landfill-bound waste, and then they receive a stipend over four months and they make a series of pieces of artwork. And then we hold an art exhibit. This year, it's going to be in October, associated with the Art Harvest Studio Tour event. So hopefully, you'll all get a chance to see that. If you can't tell from the picture, that cowboy hat is made from barbed wire, which I think is super cool, reclaimed from the transfer station. So this is an annual program. This was our first year, so we're really excited to offer it here. I think, and then the last thing I'll mention is that we're, right now, we're in the process of planting a bunch of milkweed out at the transfer station, and this is in partnership with Ramsey McPhillips Group, Tenable Regenerative Agriculture, and this is to help build more mammoth, sorry, monarch butterfly habitat as they migrate up and down the West Coast. So we're doing that out at the transfer station now, so happy to share that with you as well. And then just a couple of other future-looking updates now. We mentioned the Recycling Modernization Act, which launched July 1. This act is really overhauling Oregon's recycling system, shifting much of the costs of the system from ratepayers to packaging manufacturers. There will be a lot of benefits to McMinnville. I mentioned some of them in terms of, you know, benefits to the rates, but we'll also see a uniform statewide recycling list statewide. We'll access new and improved education and outreach materials, and then also expanded education and outreach. So things are coming with that. We cut a little bit in front of it with expanded recycling options at the transfer station already. We're offering a series of new materials there, plastic straws, plastic cutlery, lids, sandwich bag ties, those kinds of things. We also offer battery recycling, lithium ion batteries are a real problem. They start truck fires and fires in our facilities. So we're focusing on, you know, getting those out of the waste stream. And then another new thing coming, you will be able to take old mattresses, used mattresses for free to the transfer station. That's part of an EPR program that'll be launching soon. So that's another benefit for McMinnville residents. I am sorry to say, polystyrene, there's still no market for styrofoam. It's just not there yet. It is part of the Recycling Modernization Act, and so it will be coming, but it's probably going to take 18 months or so at least. If you're interested in a more comprehensive presentation on the Recycling Modernization Act and all of its elements and funding sources, I'm happy to come back, or if you want to reach out to me, I can go into it in great detail. But there's a lot. So I'll stop there. Nick?
All right. I'll take us home here. All right, trucks and equipment. I'm happy to say that we received three new trucks in the Valley over the last year, as well as a couple pieces of equipment. This is great news for many different reasons. First of all, our average age on our truck fleet is 15 years right now, so getting these new trucks in is a tremendous amount of help to not only keep these trucks on the road, reduce operation costs from R&amp;M and different things like that. So that's huge. Another reason it's really nice to finally see these arriving, some of these trucks have been ordered anywhere from two to four years ago because we're still experiencing some of the supply chain issues out of COVID. And as you can imagine, you know, during COVID, all competitors of Recology were ordering trucks as well, so there was a huge wait time on that as well. We just wrapped up a paving project at the transfer station, replaced some very worn-out asphalt, and it was pretty much to the point of gravel to that extent, so it was nice to get that replaced. We're still continuing to put a focus towards utilizing R99 renewable diesel fuel, not only in our truck fleet, but as well as our yellow iron at the transfer station at the compost site as well. Transfer station and organic yard capacity, we're still looking at how to expand these both, either through infrastructure or with the addition of new technology or processes. And we're actually exploring some of that actively right now, so we're hoping those yield good results, and we can come back with some cool results to share with you all. Landfill capacity, I do want to touch base on this really quick. For those of you that aren't aware, all of our solid waste tons in the county currently go to Coffin Butte landfill out of Corvallis. They have already been under either public scrutiny or have had a lot of concerns around capacity going forward in the future. I don't know if you guys are aware, but Covanta was the incinerator in Brooks, shut down in January. Because of that, most of the Marion County tons started flowing to Coffin Butte as well, which in theory restricted their lifespan even more so. We're hearing anything from four to 10 years. It depends who you talk to, but we realize that that's on the horizon, that that closure could be happening. In addition to that, because of the limited capacity left at the landfill, that becomes more expensive, more valuable. So we're experiencing that as well. So I wanted to share that. And then lastly, wood waste. Wood waste is slowly becoming an issue over the last 10 years after the closure of SP Newsprint Newburgh. The market is becoming more and more constrained. Essentially, the wood waste we accept at the facility, we turn into chips, and currently those chips go all the way to Longview and are burned at a paper mill for energy. Paper mills are starting to shut down more and more, and because of that, there's more and more gluttony of wood waste out there, the wood chips. So we're having a lot of issues getting rid of that. It's going to continue to be something that we're going to monitor and try to look for other outlets and avenues, so wanted to update you on that, though. And with that, yeah, that's all we have. We're open for questions, Dan or myself, or yeah, anything you guys have.
Great. Any councilors have any questions? Counselor Peralta?
First of all, thank you. I really appreciate the presentation tonight. It was a lot more thorough than previous ones, and I really appreciate talking about the waste stream and the things that you're doing in the community. So I think that by itself is a pretty big improvement. Couple of things to highlight. First, I cannot find any rates posted on Recology's McMinnville website for the cost of services. So could you just make sure that whatever rate gets adopted tonight is actually published on the Recology website, easy to find for customers? And that, thank you. I had to actually find the rates on our city website, so. So we had a consultant report that highlighted some questions about the rates and staffing levels, tonnage fees for cardboard and things like that. Do you have any feedback or response to that report?
Yes. Hello, Chris Carey, GM for Recology. So we just recently received that report. We just met with Jeffrey tonight to go over some of that, so we still have some open questions, so we're not super ready to respond to questions. I don't think at council about that because it's fresh for us and there's still some questions unanswered, so if you had something in particular.
The main question that I have is slightly related to the report and then secondarily related to the staffing levels, which you brought up this evening in terms of customer service. I'll say that my experience calling Recology's customer service in the past couple of years has not been a terribly happy one. It's very difficult to get through to your customer service lines during the normal hours of business. And when I read the consultant report, it made me question what, whether or not part of the reason we're having a hard time getting through is that the staffing levels are maybe a little bit less than what they might, what they perhaps should be given the rates that residents in the city are paying. And maybe that's something we can clean up in the upcoming contract in terms of how we calculate that, but it is a concern that we, that if Recology's not fully staffing some of those positions in order to save costs, but the city's actually contracting for a certain service level currently, that would raise a bit of a concern for me, so.
Yeah, I understand and hear what you're saying and agree with it, and that is something that we talked with Jeffrey about today, is some kind of standard that is acceptable and then we can be held accountable to. And we actually have that ourselves, and so we're actively working towards a goal of close to 40 to 50 seconds time to answer. We're not there yet. We're closer than we've ever been. We've been down in the 40-second range. What happens is we get peaks. Beginning of the month, billing goes out and lots of questions come in, events happen, inclement weather, that kind of thing. We now have tools and systems that measure our peaks and valleys for that, and so coverage has changed. We've made a lot of staffing changes in terms of breaks and lunches, like what time does everybody go, so that we have people there answering calls at the time of peak calls. So we've been putting a lot of resources into it, and we will continue to do that, and we'll work with Jeffrey to make sure that your concern is addressed in the agreement.
Great. Well, I really appreciate it. I appreciate the folks that you have in our community, and thanks for being here tonight. Appreciate that.
Counselor Chinoweth?
So I have a couple of questions. First, on the Text them all app, you said that that app can be used for bulk texting. Can that app, will that app have the capability of being used for other types of potential communication? And specifically, what I have run into, I haven't had the concerns that Sal has run into with long wait times. I typically get a fairly quick answer when I call in. I do get a long time to get a response to the issue that I have, but what I've struggled with is service not happening and no communication occurring to let me know, hey, this, and I've heard this from constituents as well, that, you know, we didn't pick up the garbage this week, and the reason we didn't pick up the garbage this week is that we are aware of what we need to do to address that going forward. Can this Text them all app be used for that kind of purpose? Or do you have something in the works to resolve this communication?
This is Dan's favorite topic, so I'm going to turn it.
Not my favorite, but it's close. We don't use it for individual customer response. In most cases, if we know there's going to be road construction in a certain area, even like a block, we can kind of geocode that and send a message just to that block. In the case of a missed cart, and I know that's been an experience of some customers, you know, we are working on improving that, and I know we've added some technology curve in the trucks to help us actually see what is out and what is missed, and so that is going to continue to improve so that those missed pickups don't happen in the first place. But when they do, I certainly hear the need for, you know, better communication back to the customers, and we're working on that.
And I would greatly appreciate that. The second question I have, and I think you've gotten this probably every single time you've come before us, but I'm going to hit it anyways, is what is it going to take to change the fee structure to be based on scales going in and out so that we can get more of an accurate charge and a consistent charge for our users?
Yeah, we've heard that loud and clear, and with the opportunity to work with Jeffrey on the franchise agreement, that is a topic that we're working through in terms of scales. I think it's a reasonable ask, and as we go through this process, there's a likelihood that that's probably going to happen.
Well, thank you for the presentation. Thank you for coming before us.
All right.
Hi, thank you for being here. You guys have been really gracious on doing tours at your place and answering questions. I know we have a contract to work through, which I'm very confident that we will, and I'd like to see the upgrades that you made, and I appreciate that very much. Thank you.
Thank you for the time. We appreciate it.
Thanks.
All right, now we're going to move on to reports from councilors on committees and board assignments and then department heads as well. I'm going to start to my left with Counselor Takowski.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Wasn't quite prepared there, but the YCOM committee has not met since the last time we spoke, so nothing to report there. There was a Airport Commission meeting, which I unfortunately was not present at, but Patty Urzog did send out a nice update for the MEDP and upcoming aviation-focused events. So that's in our email if anyone's interested. There's a Aero Connect Summer Social and Tour for MEDP, and it's at the Northwest UAV Innovation Campus. There is a MEDP quarterly newsletter also that's coming out that's going to focus on aviation and the aviation and aerospace companies within the city of McMinnville. So Patty, thank you for doing that, and I appreciate that, and that's all I have tonight.
Thank you. Counselor Chinoweth?
All my meetings are coming up, so I have nothing to report.
Counselor Gary?
Same, nothing to report.
I have my report from the last meeting, last Thursday, Mike, actually, the last two Thursdays. Mike and I picked up garbage on Third Street that started by the Chamber of Commerce, John Olson. Every Thursday morning, you can participate as well. Hey, Recology, come on, come pick up garbage with us. 8:30 in the morning, you'd start at the Chamber Building, and they provide the trash bags and the pickers and the gloves and everything. So it's a really good way to help be positive in the downtown area, and it expands past Third Street. June 26th, I also attended the Board of Commissioners meeting. They had a public hearing on a piece of property on Lone Oak Road that butts up to the cemetery, and they were talking about natural water runoff from Lone Oak property. Also attended the Fire, McMinnville Fire District Board meeting on the 26th of June. They said goodbye to Scott Law, who is moving on to be the chief in Dayton. They talked about getting, being rewarded, or awarded, the $3 million from the state, which is great for them, and it's great for our entire community. Attended the monthly meeting, our monthly meeting with Commissioner Johnston. We talked about preparing for the fair. We also attended chat with the chair, which again is Kit Johnston. And two appointments were made at the Commissioners meeting on the 3rd to the Park Advisory Board and one to the Road Improvement Board. I met yesterday with Vicki from the Housing Authority, updated me on the Stratus Avenue property. They will be opening Phase 1 in November and Phase 2 in April. They are anywhere from 30 to 60 AMI. They, Housing Authority has 1,600 vouchers for housing, and they have a four-year waitlist and are closed, not taking any names. So we do have, still have a need for housing. So we do have, still have a need for housing. And also I have an updated message from Provoking Hope. In case you haven't heard, they will not be moving into the building across from Citizens Bank on Fourth Street. They have moved back to their 10th Avenue, 10th Street building. It just didn't work out, so they're, they're 10th and Baker Street building. They have also had some big cuts with state funding and so they're down to four-day-a-week service, except for their Siring Outreach Program, which is at five days a week. And they are closing their Sheridan location as well. So wanted to do those updates and I am going to be moving on to Counsel Peralta.
Mayor, may I ask a question?
Yes.
On the, uh, basically the garbage pickup, eight-thirty AM on a Thursday is very difficult for some people to attend.
You could go any day at any time.
Yeah, but I wanna be social too, so...
You call me, I'll go with you. Thank you.
All right.
Counsel Peralta.
No report.
No report. Counsel Cunningham.
Yes, so, um, we had a Historic Landmarks Committee meeting in which an applicant actually returned from a previous presentation. It was interesting because the applicant did not come and represent themselves. And so the committee, I would say, went above and beyond to both find ways to meet the goals of the Historic Landmarks Committee, but while trying to work with the applicant so that they could meet their own goals. So I really do want to give kudos to all those people on that committee, trying to do a really good job of balancing the needs of our community and the needs of, of the business owners or, in this particular case. Also had the Affordable Housing Committee meeting in which we got to see the final draft of the Construction Excise Tax Program. Hopefully that will be scheduled for one of our dockets fairly soon. They've been putting in, again, a lot of work to try to get that to us so that we can start getting these funds available to those who will continue to build more affordable housing or actually keep housing around. So then also Planner Evan Heptus, uh, presented to us a new program. I guess it's been around for a little bit within the state, but the Moderate Income Revolving Loan Program. This, uh, has, I think, about $60 million in the fund right now. Places, communities are starting to work towards being a, a sponsor for it, uh, in which we will basically be, um, kind of almost the go-between as, as the city of McMinnville with developers. And it has, uh, it definitely has some legs and, and I love that it's a loan program that will refund itself over a period of time. So they'll be able to continue the program moving forward. And then when we just had kind of updates from our local community groups, just like we heard tonight from Ms. Plonka, like we heard from you, many of those community groups are seeing significant funding reductions and are having to make some very, very difficult decisions, which I think will have unfortunately probably tragic results for our own community members.
Jeff Towery.
Uh, thank you, Mayor, members of council. You know, pending an action later on in the agenda, this is perhaps my last regular city council meeting, which means that a lot of the other things I've been doing and will be doing next several days are sort of the last of each of them. So I don't really have a focused report, other than to say, um, I'm wrapping a lot of things up. Thank you.
Thank you. Attorney David Lightberg.
Thank you, Mayor. Once again, most of the stuff that I've been working on is on your agenda tonight. The only thing I wanted to update you on separately is that I will be out of the office much of next week and back in time for our next regular council meeting.
Thank you. Director Richards.
Yes, thank you, Mayor and counselors. You've heard some of the great work that's occurring in the department from the other counselors who are serving as liaisons on our committees. But I also wanted to share with you some projects. My library things being development projects underway. I said I would bring you a project that is nearly finished and, and moving towards completion and then a project that we have just gotten into the pipeline. So I wanted to talk a little bit about Ruby's Apartments, which were built next to Ruby's Market across from On Point. It turned out to be a really nice infill small apartment complex. It's done now. It's actually fully occupied and has a waitlist already. But the, I think the product turned out really nice. It's one of the, it's one of the first prod, products that went through our new residential design standards for multifamily developments. And so I encourage everyone, as you go by, look at that and see, see what you like and don't like about it, but we think it turned out really well. And then just today, we got in a land use application for a comp plan map amendment and zone change for what is called the Baker Property, which is on this, the north side of Highway 18 on Cumulus Avenue between Physicians Medical Center and the Commercial Gas Station there. So it's a, it's about six lots. It's what was identified in our Three Mile Lane area plan as a good opportunity site for a mixed-use development, so with commercial development on the frontage road, uh, housing above it and then housing behind it down to the river. And so that property owner is coming forward and starting to move forward with that project. So they have their first land use application in for that. So that will be the third project that has come out of that Three Mile Lane area planning process that is moving through our, that has either moved through our development review or will be moving through our development review. And then I also wanted to let you know that we are, we are also working with other developers on housing products and, um, working through all the different regulations that have passed at the, at the state and trying to understand them a little bit better. This most recent session had, every session has an omnibus housing bill, which usually ends up being 100 pages of many different changes to our housing laws and directions to cities on how to interpret them. And we haven't been able to keep up with that. So typically developers are coming in and sharing them with us and we're working through that. So you will see from us coming forward at your next city council meeting, a request to, to apply for grant funds from the state, the Department of Land Conservation and Development with their Housing Assistance Program to hire someone to go through the last five years of statutory changes that have happened relative to housing and also make recommendations for us for code updates on how we can become compliant with that. And then also do, uh, training with our staff so that we understand how we can apply it as well. I think by doing that, we will, um, be able to really reduce a lot of the frustration that's, that's, I'm seeing on both our staff level and also the development side in terms of bringing those different regulation changes to bear in our community.
Just a moment, I think Counsel Gary has a question for you, Heather.
Just a question on, uh, another effort, I think it was in May, RFQ has gone out. How's the Transportation System Plan, uh, RFQ launched?
Hasn't launched yet. It's still in internal review. We are, we're trying to, um, we recently did a, uh, a system assessment of our programs and one of the, one of the findings from that is, is coordinating really well with our internal partners on how we deliver products out externally. Uh, so we're working through that and I know it's frustrating for everyone, just as frustrating for us that, that we still haven't gotten that out. We do get calls from consultants all the time. So our goal is to get that out by the end of this summer.
Okay.
Chief Wood.
Two updates for the council this, this time. I've spoken before about a different approach to traffic enforcement that we were exploring. You may have seen on the department's social media page that in the month of July, we're gonna roll that approach out and we're going to have some enhanced enforcement at the top 10 traffic collision locations across the city that we've identified. There's five categories of crash, or violations that we know contribute to crashes and injuries in crashes that we are gonna be looking to, to enforce at those locations. So I guess fair warning that you will see an increased traffic enforcement presence across the city, in particular at those 10 locations. The other thing, I was gonna give the council a quick hiring update. The department's full steam ahead in trying to fill our ranks. We're currently training two police officers who've come back from DPSST and are in their field training program. We have two that are currently in background with the department. We have a lateral candidate that we're going to interview this week. And then Monday is going to be a big recruiting and interviewing day for the department. We'll be doing interviews for both police officers and for captain candidates, uh, all day. It's gonna be all day interviewing over at, at MAC PD.
And Resource Director Vicki Hedges.
Um, adding on to Chief Woods' report on recruitment, I am still working through the Parks and Rec Director recruitment. We are having the second round of interviews tomorrow and then the last round of interviews, hopefully on July 15th. So once the second round is complete tomorrow, you guys will receive an updated schedule for that interview process. Also working through, as you know, the recruitment process for the interim city manager, preparing for the first round of application reviews, which are due on Friday, the 11th. And then just an update on training, uh, we are at 90% complete. 6% have not yet started and 4% are in progress. And while I know it's become a little bit of a fun thing to update on training, I do wanna really thank council for the interest in that training component. It has made a big difference for our employees, knowing that council cares about that and they are obviously getting their training done, just knowing that council's watching and interested in making sure that we are completing those trainings. So thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor, may I ask a question?
Yes, Counsel Chenoweth.
Um, and if you can't answer it, that's fine, but how, how many applicants are we interviewing for the Park and Rec Director position?
Right now, there are three applicants actively in the process.
Public Works Director GF Hensiker.
Yes, good mor, uh, good evening. So Chandler's addition, paving is done. Cypress and Fellows, that paving's going well. We got through the intersection, but we were most worried about the condition there and we actually had a good subgrade, so we're continuing, knock on wood, to have good luck through there, um, which is awesome. Next week, we're gonna be starting the streets pavement patching work. They're gonna be doing some pavement patching on Second as well as Baker Creek, but, so you'll see some traffic control out there, but we're just gonna do lane shifts, so there shouldn't be any road closures for that. On the wastewater side, our permitting with the EQs still going well. Uh, we've actually been getting a lot of compliments on the condition of our plant, especially some of our older components and how well they're still running, uh, which says a lot about the work that Leland and Mike and that team does to get every ounce of use out of that equipment out there and they're doing a great job. And then finally, on, well, on the operations side, street crews busy painting curbs, applying crack sealant. They helped do the striping for the Third Street demonstration block. Park maintenance is out there, just keeping up with summer mowing and irrigating and all that. And then quick update on the Airport Commission, um, since Counsel Tokolski wasn't able to be there, we talked a lot about minimum standards and code updates to city code for the airport. Those were recommended to go to the council for approval, so you'll be seeing that in the upcoming council meeting for your consideration. And at the next Airport Commission meeting, we're gonna be talking about leases and fees and all how those work and how the airport makes money and if we're continuing to do what we gotta do to keep that airport operating. That's it.
Can you remind me when the work is gonna start? The ODOT work in regards to the crosswalks, that list?
We are still working through the IGA on that right now. There was a bit of a holdup with some interesting history on whose right-of-way is whose and our city engineer had to dig through records from 1939, um, when we changed Adams and Baker over to the, being the couplet. So essentially, the right-of-way between the curbs is ODOTs and the right-of-way on the sidewalks is ours from what we can understand. That was due to what was accepted by Mayor Chenoweth at the time back in the 30s. So we're not sure if that's related or not, but, um, if you don't like that, uh...
Yeah. Yes. I think Counsel Peralta has a question for you as well.
Yes.
Yeah, Jeff, do you have a, a scope of project and timetable for the project on Johnson, I believe it is? I saw some signs over there.
Yes.
Here downtown, first and second.
Yeah. I'm thinking that's for the pavement patching work on, over there, that's gonna be occurring on Second. You said it's on Johnson specifically?
I saw the signs on Johnson. It might've been Johnson and Second, though.
Okay, I'll, I don't know off the top of my head. I'll double-check with staff and see if I can get you an answer.
Counsel Cunningham, did you have a question?
Yes. Um, just down here, uh, between, uh, let's see, Davis and Evans, we've got like Northwest Natural doing quite a bit of work. Do we know what they're doing and when it will be done?
Yes, they had to replace a valve. When they got down there, the valve was an old kind of valve that they don't like having in their system anymore, for whatever reason. And so they're having to do a much larger valve replacement in there. Um, I believe they're trying to be wrapped up by next week, but it's a slow process for that one. So, uh, 'cause it's kinda deep down and all that. We've been speaking with, um, staff has been connecting with, um, the Chamber on that to make sure businesses are kind of aware of it and we've been letting them know to be careful around Thursdays and stuff. Haven't heard anything? All right, then we need to work on that. But, um, yeah, that's valve replacement that Northwest Natural's doing.
Okay, we're gonna move on. Oh, Vicki.
Sorry, I just have one more update. I promised an updated schedule for interviews for the Parks and Rec Director, but I forgot to remind you that I will also be providing you with an updated schedule for the interim city manager, um, position, uh, probably by Tuesday next week, and that's for interviews on the 18th.
Okay, thank you. Scott Burke, Information Systems.
Thanks, Mayor and council. Couple of things going on over at IS is, uh, once we've started in on the RMS Records Management Upgrade Project at the police station and servers and systems are set up, thanks to a lot of help from our partners at YCOM. And we kicked off our first day of administrative user training today in tandem with personnel from Mham Hill County and the front office at the police department. So those are our first steps on the ground after literally a couple of years of planning. Uh, the whole system's projected to be in place by, I believe, March and spring. There's a lot of steps left to go between integrations, field training, e-ticketing, all kinds of things, but we're pretty excited to actually get started doing things with it, so that's a good sign. And then in addition to that, uh, there's a lot of activity in our department at the beginning of the fiscal year, 'cause we have a lot of contracts to renew, a lot of software that comes due for every single department. And, um, in tandem with the entire budget process we just went through, this is our real opportunity to start executing our plan as early as possible. We're, we've been in touch with almost every department. We're removing people as much as possible from Zoom to Teams to save money. There's a bunch of software costs we can reduce by looking at different vendors, different products that are a little bit cheaper, but when you multiply it by as many users as you can move over, starts to make a real dent in the changes we've made from last year to this year. And that's about it for us.
Good job, thank you. Claudia Cisneros, City Recorder.
Yes, I have a couple of dates for council to keep on their calendars. Um, August 5th is National Night Out. That is going to be from 5:00 to 8:00 at Discovery Meadows Park and I've already noticed a quorum, just in case everyone wants to attend and volunteer, maybe. Um, August 20th, we, I have placed a save the date for the city-county dinner. It's going to be hosted by the city of Carlton. We haven't received an official invitation yet, but that will be coming and once I get that, I will send it out to the full council. And then we will be having a special meeting on August 28th for the council retreat, so just make sure if you have any issues, you let myself or the mayor know ahead of time.
Perfect. Thank you very much, everyone. Lot of information. Okay, we're gonna move on to the consent agenda. Anybody want the, that red, or can we do a motion to accept the consent agenda that is a permit for the ground?
I move to accept the consent agenda.
So I have a motion from Counsel Cunningham and a second from Counsel Gary. Any discussion? Claudia?
Counsel Tokolski.
Aye.
Counsel Chenoweth.
Aye.
Counsel Gary.
Aye.
Counsel Cunningham.
Aye.
Aye.
And Council President Peralta.
Yes.
And the consent agenda has passed unanimously by a vote of five to zero.
Fun. Okay, we're going to move on to a resolution. To consider Resolution Number 2025-36, a resolution adopting limits for declaration of surplus personal property by staff under Chapter 2.21 of the McMenville Municipal Code, I'd like to call on Attorney David Leitenberg to present.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. This resolution is a follow-up to an ordinance that you passed on May 13. If you'll recall the conversation on that evening, this was for a codified and streamlined process for the sale of surplus personal property, something that we had not had in the code previously, and hopefully that makes things a lot simpler and more straightforward to a lot of staff trying to navigate some piling up equipment and honestly junk drawers and closets and rooms and basements. Under that resolution, it requires that limits on the ability to declare something surplus are set by council. So, I've got a resolution here that proposes it. I would like to note that in my staff report, there's a mistake. The resolution is correct, but I recommend in the staff report, city manager authority up to $100,000. That should be 70 or 75, which actually matches goods and services in purchasing authority. 100 is a different number, and I was just moving too fast. Again, that matches goods and services authority that already exists. Kind of got a nice symmetry there. The one that is unique is department head authority. That was made sort of at a reasonable guesstimate, because we are trying to have the ability to reside in the departments for the surplusing and sale of vehicles. That was one of the, was one of the impetus for this whole effort at surplusing, and keeping it at a department level keeps things moving smoothly, quickly. Either of these numbers are entirely up to council. These are currently my own and staff's recommendation. And if you have any questions, I can answer them, I hope.
Any questions? Well, I was, I had copped $100,000, and I was going to say, say it needs to go down to 75 at the most.
Thank you.
$20,000 seems a little high for me, but I do understand that Public Works has some vehicles. I'm not sure if any of those are worth $20,000, though, right now. But it's not noted in here that I saw, and if I missed it, tell me, is what happens to the funds?
The, that's a good question. Part of the ordinance also contemplated that the, the form for declaring surplus be approved by the finance director. And the finance director has recently looked over a first version of this form, and that specifies that anybody seeking to surplus will call out the funds by which the items were purchased, including specifically laying out any grant funding that got that, that got those particular items, and all funds for purchases of, or for whatever other disposal methods are specified, would go back to those funds.
Okay, so it'll stay within the department if the department purchased it?
Specifically where it was purchased from, yes.
And how would that go back with grants, when you mentioned grants?
That is something that exists in the finance director's knowledge and not in mine. I'm sorry.
Okay. Jeff, did you have something you wanted to share?
So, the, part of the review is to find out if there are any grant conditions related to the disposal of the property. In most cases, we wouldn't be disposing of the property unless it was allowed under the grant. And, and as with any other direct purchases, the, 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 sort of the host fund for the grant would also be the recipient of any surplus resources.
Finance Director Katie, did, Henry, do you have something? I just saw you pop up on the screen. Do you have anything you wanted to add?
Yes, I was just going to respond, since I had worked with our attorney on, on this item. So, with grants, there's a general purpose of the grant, much like what our city manager was just saying. So, there's the department. Typically, grants have a, a general purpose, so it can sometimes be more restrictive than the pro, than just the department. It can be down to the program. So, it could be specifically, for example, aquatics versus senior center, if it was in Parks and Recreation. So, it just goes back to that purpose, but it doesn't go back to general fund for everything or anything like that. Just, yeah, for any, any asset, really, goes back to that. And as far as the accounting goes, there's actually a calculation based on how much the value is on the books, because there could still be a value based on depreciation over time. And so, on the books, we have to true that piece up as well first. So, there's a sort of a difference sometimes between the cash that comes in and the value that's reported on the books, because we have to take into account that depreciation.
What if there's no value to what we have to surplus?
Then, if there's no value to it at all, then the full amount that we get, if we do sell it, gets to come back to that department, but it still goes back to that department.
And if we're going to, if there's no value to anything with it, and we're going to donate it, or we're going to just dispose of it, what's that process?
There are provisions in the new adopted ordinance that deal with that as well, for items that are under $500 or items that have no value. There are abilities to donate, abilities to give away, even abilities to throw away if it doesn't, if there's not a cost associated with that.
Perfect, thank you. Any other questions? Council Tokolski?
Mayor, I did have a question, thank you. In Resolution 2025-36, there was actually two, number two bullet points in there, so there's just a quick error on that one. But I, my general question on this one is, should there be a fourth bullet point? And the reason I ask is because we had Kent Taylor, who had served the city as city manager for 28 years, and I don't know if it would, would be wise to have a time period here where we were reviewing that purchasing authority of that individual, or if we should just take it up when that need arises. Should it be on a cycle of every few years?
Purchasing authority or disposals?
Excuse me, I'm sorry, the disposal authority, that's what I meant.
So, you, the fourth item you want to consider is, clarify that for me.
An addition of the, well, it would be a modify, a review of the value of the disposal authority of said individual. Does that make sense?
Not quite.
No?
Not quite, I'm sorry.
Try again. Chris, you got anything?
I think I'm hearing a request for a sunset in these authority amounts to be revisited before being authorized again by council.
To be revisited, yes. That way, it stays a bit more active than perhaps 28 years.
Oh, I see what you're saying, okay.
Thank you for clarification on that.
Just in case it helps for the conversation, part of the reason that these were divided up this way is because resolutions are simpler for the council to reach at any time. They can come up and be revisited upon request. That's not to say that that's not a reasonable request, but I want you to know that resolutions make that easier.
So, we can put that in there, or we can just, I mean, I have a plan at some point to kind of go through and check resolutions. I think they should be reviewed every couple of years, because there are changes.
That seems reasonable, but I'll, I'll let others decide here. That was my opinion.
Council Chenoweth, did you have input?
I just wanted to make sure his first point was caught, that we have a Scribner error, that it goes 122 instead of 123.
Yeah.
Do you see that? Thank you.
Thank you, yes, because I didn't catch that. Council Cunningham? Okay. Did you have anything, though? Okay, Katie, Counsel, or excuse me, Finance Director Katie Henry?
I just wanted to respond to Council Tokolski's question on the, the sunsetting issue. We in finance will be bringing forward a lot of policies and procedures over the next year to two years. I'm having to break it down into smaller pieces, and the surplus is one of those. It's part of a bigger policy on fixed assets that I intend to bring forward. And one of the things that you'll see in these policies that I intend to bring forward is the frequency at which they need to be reviewed. And I think that that will address that concern. So, even if we don't have it in this resolution tonight, it's part of a project that I'm working on to incorporate over the next few years. And, and if it's okay, I would love to do that in conjunction with all of these other procedures, so we do it consistently across the board.
Are you good with that, Counselor?
Yeah, I'm just, yeah, I'm thankful that you have that review process moving forward, so thank you. I'll stand down.
Perfect, thank you. Thank you, Katie. Any other questions? Okay, do I have a motion to consider Resolution Number 2025-36, a resolution adopting limits for declaration of surplus personal property by staff under Chapter 2.21 of the McMenville Municipal Code?
Sorry, I jumped the gun, so moved. Second.
As amended. I have...
You mean with the Scribner error?
With corrections.
As corrected.
Thank you.
Perfect. So, I have a motion from Council Chenoweth and a second from Council Tokolski. Any additional discussion? Nope. Okay, Claudia?
Council Tokolski.
Aye.
Council Chenoweth.
Aye.
Council Gary.
Aye.
Council Cunningham.
Aye.
Council President Peralta.
Yes.
Resolution dash 2025-36 passes unanimously by a vote of five to zero.
Thank you, Claudia. Now, we're going to consider Resolution Number 2025-37, a resolution authorizing an amendment to the city manager's employment agreement incorporating terms for separation from the city employment. I'd like to call again on City Attorney David Leitenberg to present.
Thank you, Mayor, Councilors. I have nothing to add beyond what's already in the report. I will just remark on the paragraph that you already got in front of you, the report in brief, to give some background on the record. City Manager Towery provided notice of his resignation on June 2. Under terms of his employment agreement, this notice was at least 90 days in advance of a voluntary resignation date of September 2, 2025. The city, desiring to move more rapidly into the process of securing an interim city manager, offered terms for an earlier separation that have been found acceptable by City Manager Towery, and the attached resolution will effectuate that agreement. You have seen these terms before, and now you're able to ask questions, discuss, and hopefully adopt them.
Do I have any questions, discuss, discussion? Sorry, I'm having a hard time with that D today. Council Tokolski?
Yeah, Mayor, thank you. I don't have a question, but on bullet point number two, there's actually two, two of the words "through" in there. So, City Recorder, there's just an error in that one as well.
As though through.
As about through?
As though through.
That's correct.
It is. I remember reading that exact same thing, doing a double take.
All right, that's why you're the attorney, I'm the engineer.
And the two of you together are quite fun. Any other questions? Sorry.
I can't help it.
Okay, do I have a motion to accept, to consider? I have a motion from Council Cunningham and a second from?
Second.
From Council Gary. Any other discussion? Chris, just wait. Roll call.
Council Tokolski.
Aye.
Council Chenoweth.
Aye.
Council Gary.
Aye.
Council Cunningham.
Aye.
And Council President Peralta.
Yes.
Resolution dash 2025-37 passes unanimously by a vote of five to zero.
Jeff, thank you for your service, and I want everybody to know that he will be here one more meeting on the 16th, so if you're able to come on that night to say goodbye. Thank you. Okay, we're going to move on to consider Resolution Number 2025-39, a resolution appointing a short-term interim city manager to steward city manager functions from July 17, 2025, to the appointment of an interim city manager under Resolution 2025-31. Call on City Attorney David Leitenberg.
Thank you, Mayor. I think, right as you were saying that, I noticed another typo tonight. I'm not doing well, but the subject line in the staff report refers to this as Resolution 2025-38. By everything I'm reading, that is incorrect. You were right, is 2025-39, just to tie those things together. Having passed the previous resolution, we are now in a position where the city council has adopted procedures and a hoped-for timeline for an interim city manager. And as noted, City Manager Towery's end of duties will be next week on the 16th. That leaves a gap of potentially six weeks. And while you have the authority to do what you will with those six weeks, I felt incumbent on me in my office to bring a recommendation to you that you consider an internal appointment, an acting incapacity city manager. I think there are some benefits to that, not just in cost, but in recency and familiarity, as noted in my staff report and recommendation. What I noted in particular is that Directors Scott Burke, Vicky Hedges, and Jeff Hansaker have all indicated they would accept such an appointment if the council were to request it. And so, beyond that, I am not making a further recommendation, but noting that you might consider any one of them or any combination of the three of them, in whatever way you decide to build that. That is as far as my recommendation goes, and I would let you take it from here.
I'm willing to start on this one. So, as I noted in the paper and listed all three of you, you're all very competent and very loyal employees, and I think you would all do a great job. And I think we all, together, the whole council and all the ET and all of us, will work together to get through this temporary interim, and then the interim, and then selecting a replacement for Jeff. So, I think we're going to be a team no matter what, but there needs to be the one person that is the ultimate signing off on something. I cannot make a proposal, but I would like to just tell you what my recommendation would be, would be to be HR Director Vicky Hedges. I know there's some time that you're going to be gone, and I would state your backup would be Scott Burke. I think he should be that, in that place. Jeff, you have a lot on your plate right now, and so does Scott Burke with the, all of the IT stuff. So, that is where my idea came from, but I don't foresee that Vicky is going to be the main leader, honestly, because it's a team effort. But she would be the ultimate in charge. There would be two days that I know you'll be gone, for sure. So, those are my thought processes, but I want to hear from the entire council. It's, we're in this together, so. Anybody has any other thoughts, or?
I'll, I'll just say that, just kind of echoing, I, I think that we are blessed as a community to have three of our, our team willing to step up to a significant challenge. So, I want to thank every single one of them, so.
Council Chenoweth?
Thank you, Mayor. I would echo those sentiments. I think that we have a great team, and I thank you guys all for being willing to do this. I would also tend to lean in the direction you're leaning, just knowing the workload that's on the other two departments. And I think it's kind of a natural fit for an HR director to kind of step into a role like that. So, to me, I see the wisdom in your suggestion, and would, would be amiable to moving in that direction.
Council Gary?
I just would say thank you to the three that put their name forward and agree, I think, three great choices to lead in, in the interim, interim, and mostly agree with sort of the item three in the staff report, that any one city manager in an absence has the ability to delegate that, delegate functions, so not supporting sort of a co-manager style that putting one person in charge, and when absences pop up and then things get busy, that that person can bring those other two into the fold, so. And having a direction in front of you... And having a direction in front of you, us, via your recommendation, yeah, again, having three great, not candidates, willing participants, is, is great to choose from, so I'd, I'd be happy to follow your lead on that.
Counsel Tekolsky, can I have your input?
I support the nomination of Director Hedges with the backup of Director Burke. I believe that's a wise decision in the interim.
Counsel Cunningham?
May I just ask a question? And I don't know, maybe, David? In the situation where the HR manager is the acting city manager, is there any conflict there when someone needs to talk to HR?
David needs something to do, they can't talk to David.
I don't think that's likely. Sure. It's hard to imagine a circumstance in which that's the case, but if there were, then we always have the capacity to contract outside, to use legal help in that situation to resolve a conflict like that. I think there would be a number of ways to approach that eventually if it were to arise. Thank you.
I have a question.
Count, just one sec. Counsel Peralta?
I appreciate the conversation on the dais, and I agree with the direction it's been recommended.
Okay. Counsel Gary?
If we are appointing HR Director Hedges as interim, would, would we, would it behoove us to look at contracted specialized help in HR specifically to get all the work through that would be normally handled in her department and to help alleviate that burden? Is that, is that something we could look at bringing on or analyzing the benefits of in, in the time that she would be overseeing the city?
I'm going to say it's not that short of a time period that you're going to, that she would be in the temporary interim position, but if it ended up being longer, we could do that. Am I speaking?
That's exactly my thoughts. I don't think it will be long enough to where that would be necessary. I also do have HR assistant to help with that, and she's willing to pick up some workload if needed.
Okay, very good.
Counsel Tekolsky, did you have another?
I was just going to bring up Amy Miles is still here, so, yeah, it's, that's it. Thank you.
Yes.
Mayor, just let me add one more additional response to Counsel Cunningham's question. Our policies and procedures contemplate multiple avenues for engagement if people have issues or concerns or complaints. The HR director is one of those points of contact, the city attorney, the department head in question, so there, there are other ways that folks could engage with, with, with HR support if for some reason somebody wasn't comfortable reporting to the HR director.
Thank you. Any additional questions? Would someone like to make a motion?
I would. I move that we pass Resolution 2025-39 with the blank being filled with Director Hedges with backup from Director Burke.
Do I have a second?
Second.
So I have a motion from Counsel Chinowith, a second from Counsel Cunningham. Any additional questions, comments? Claudia?
Counsel Tekolsky.
Aye.
Counsel Chinowith.
Aye.
Counsel Gary.
Aye.
Counsel Cunningham.
Aye.
Counsel President Peralta.
Yes.
Resolution that, uh, 2025-39 passes unanimously by a vote of five to zero.
Perfect, and thank you, Vicky, Scott, and Jeff. Appreciate it. Okay, we're going to move on to consider Resolution, Resolution Number 2025-38, a resolution adopting a 2.1% CPI-based solid waste and recycling services rate increase per the franchise agreement with Recology of Western Oregon. Call on Jeff Hensiger, Public Works Director, Director to present.
Yes, so Recology did touch on this in their presentation earlier. There's not a lot to go over here. This is just a requirement of the franchise agreement, that a rate adjustment shall happen per the CPI. It's a little odd that it's a shall happen, and yet it still has to be adopted by the council. That's just a little weirdness. We'll get that cleaned up with a new agreement, I'm sure, but this was reviewed by myself and our finance director, and everything looked good in it, so staff recommendation is to approve the rate adjustment.
Perfect. Do I have any questions? Okay, do I have a motion to accept Resolution Number 2025-38?
So moved.
I have a motion from Counsel Cunningham. I need a second.
Second.
Counsel, second from Counsel Peralta. Claudia?
Aye.
Counsel Chinowith.
Aye.
Counsel Gary.
Aye.
Counsel Cunningham.
Aye.
Counsel President Peralta.
Yes.
Resolution 2025-38 passes by a vote of four to, to one.
Thank you, you guys. Okay, now, the city council, acting in their capacity as members of the Urban Renewal Agency, will now go into the conference room for a close to the public executive session pursuant to O R S 192.6602-dash. Hello, I am still reading, counsel. You got in trouble for that last week. To, to deliberate with persons designated by the governing body to negotiate real property transactions. Does any counselor need to declare an actual or potential conflict of interest or recuse themselves regarding the executive session for the record? Okay, it is 8:36. I now adjourn the meeting. Thank you.